President.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kaler.
Present. Who would like to do the invocation tonight?
I'm Abraham.
Mr. Abraham, would you like to do that?
When you ask for volunteers, then you, I got you.
Thank you.
I'm good.
And pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Galt.
Okay.
Father in heaven, we come this afternoon and we, we have concern, heavy hearts for those families in Boston, those, the folks that were injured, those that were killed. It reminds us that every day as we go about our daily activities, that there's evil in the world. There's always been evil in the world. We pray that those that need comfort use in your spirit to comfort them. Father, we pray that a nation would not become bitter but forgiving because we know through your word that those are the attributes of true healing, forgiveness. We know it's extremely challenging in situations like this. These things we ask in your steward's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Abraham.
You're welcome.
For good words for what's happened in the last two days. Any additions or deletions, City Manager?
No ma'am.
Okay. We have a workshop tonight, so.
Uh, Mayor.
Yes.
Before we get going, Sophia, if you're watching, you and your friends in the bowling room, I remembered, hi, how are you? So.
Okay. We have, we have to do those important.
We have to do it.
All right, we're doing a workshop tonight and Cindy, if you'll come forward, it's, we're going to talk about the Kentucky Prescription Drug Card Program.
Yes ma'am. Okay, Mayor and Commissioner, I'm delighted to talk to you tonight about the Kentucky Prescription. It's a discount drug program. Commissioner Abraham brought this type of program to my attention some time ago. And I have to admit, when I first saw some of these discounts and when it was first brought to my attention, I met it with some skepticism, just seemed like maybe one of those programs that might be too good to be true, so kind of set it aside. But I'm delighted to show you some of the benefits of the program for your consideration. Okay, what is it? The Kentucky Prescription Card, it's, it's a free statewide discount prescription assistance program. And it was launched really to help the uninsured or the underinsured to have assistance with their prescriptions. It's, you can use this card at over 56,000 pharmacies around the nation. Who would be eligible to use it? Every citizen of the state of Kentucky is eligible for it. So, all of our citizens and visitors that are residents of Kentucky would be, would benefit from it. You can download a free card at their website. It's www.kentuckyrxcard.com. You can search drug pricing. One of the really nifty things about this one, there are several of these kinds of discount drug programs available. The National League of Cities uses one, the Kentucky League of Cities uses one. Their marketing materials are very, very similar. And however, one of the really neat features of this program is the drug search feature that they have. I went to their website, I typed in, first I Googled, what are the most common prescriptions? I typed in some of those common prescriptions and I got not only rewarded with, this is, these are my local pharmacies that are in the program, this is how far they are, this is where they are, this is how much that particular drug costs at, with this card at any number of participating pharmacies within five mile radius or 10 mile radius. So it was a very search user-friendly website, which of course is available 24 hours a day. Okay. So how, how do they do that? And they do it because the pharmacies and the pharmaceutical companies have partnered and have decided to make these discounts available to people who go to the website and download the card. So this program is different. Some, some, there are some discount programs out there that do charge enrollment fees, they, they want forms, they want a lot of personal information. This program is different. It is, it's not going to ask any personal information. You type in your first name, you type in your last name. If you don't want even that information printed out on your card, you can check a box saying, I just want a secret kind of card. It'll print out a secret card and you can take that and use it for these discounts. So they're, they'll, they're not collecting any personal information. They're not going to share or sell any, there's no information for them to, to sell. There's no age limitations, there's no income limitations, there's no waiting period, it's all instant, no pre-existing conditions. It's one of those things, this one is good also in that you can use it if you, if you already have insurance, like our employees. One of the, one of the testimonials that I read on it was a person, for example, that has insurance, but they spilled their medication. And their insurance wouldn't pay to refill the medication within that 30-day window. So they, instead of giving their insurance card, they gave this discount card and they were able to get it at a reduced price. And, and this person's testimonial said that this card's price was lower than their insurance negotiated rate. So I don't know that that is a typical, I haven't found that with some of my searches, but that was in this person's testimonial. And yes, just as, as we just discussed, you can use it if you do have insurance for non-covered drugs in that example. It uses a lowest price logic to calculate your savings. It says that the savings are tip, are up to 75%. I saw one at 81% savings in my Google searches looking for average retail price. And then it's, it is saying that its average price reduction was 30%. And of the dozen or so drugs that I've tried in that system that are just common drugs, I've found that to be fairly true. Okay. So just the highlights, the overview of the program, it's available to everyone. There are no applications or waiting periods. There's a good discount, usually between 30 and 75%. 56,000 pharmacies nationwide. It's, it would all be confidential. You're not inputting a lot of information, really just first name and last name can get you a, a card. This discount card also has some additional discounts that it offers, prescription eyeglasses, hearing aids and so forth. I've got that coming up here on another slide, so I'll move on. These are just typical, in my Google search, I said, tell me what some really popular drugs are to, to be filled. And so I just selected these. I looked at retail price, the member price, and then member savings. As you can see, the tramadol was the 81% savings I was talking about. But there's everything on that board from, you know, 11% to 81. These are the additional savings that you can get with these. I didn't do a lot of testing on these, but there's a, there's a website called $39glasses.com that you can use coupon code $25glasses and, and get $25 prescription eyeglasses. There's the hearing plan you see there. There's a diabetic supply savings plan, there's teeth whitening savings plan, and then you see the logos of the participating pharmacies. But as I, as I did my searches and I did my five and 10 mile radius, there are quite a few of our local pharmacies that are in that mix. This, this data is a few months old, so at the time it had been estimated to save Kentuckians $9 million. And most of us have felt that prescriptions really are the fastest rising cost of the healthcare component. Just throwing in some additional reality-type statistics, 647,000 Kentuckians don't have health insurance. Nearly 30% of Kentuckians can't afford at least one prescription. Americans fill 10 prescriptions regularly and, and for those of us in Kentucky, we average 16. Nearly half a million children in Kentucky receive Medicaid benefits as, as of 2011. And adults, more than 239,000 Kentuckians between 18 and 29 are uninsured. We are the sixth highest in the nation for obesity rates and the third in the nation for childhood obesity, sixth for diabetes at 10.5% of us adults, and second in the nation for tobacco at 24.8%. So the benefits of offering this to our citizens would be, it's something that everybody could use. It assists the at-risk population as well as the general population. It offers a benefit with no cost. The Kentucky League of Cities, as a partner to this type of program, has offered to print up 1,000 cards to, to, to get us going. We don't need the physical card because, as I stated, the most common approach is to go to the website and download your own card. I've included some testimonials. I talked about the middle one, so just to give you an idea, the, the, the sandwich here, the top and the bottom one. I can't believe it, my husband's asthma medication is usually $300. I asked the CVS rep about the Kentucky Prescription Card and she came back and said that the prescription would only be $185. I was floored, thank you so much, this is a big deal for our family. That's Julie M. in Bowling Green. In Frankfurt, Ethel S. tells us, you've answered my prayers. My husband and I both take the same heart medication and we were having to take pills every other day in order to afford it. Thanks to your card, we can afford to fill the prescription monthly and we saved over $100 on our other medications. We're glad we found you. So the next steps, the proposal here for your consideration is to, let's create a link to this website at our website. Ask KLC to go ahead and print up some cards and have those available as well in addition to driving folks to the website. And then citizens would be able to use it immediately.
Okay, thank you Cindy. Any questions? Any questions for Cindy?
I can't get to pull up.
I beg your pardon?
I can't get to pull up.
Oh.
All right. What's the, what's the economic incentive for the company to sponsor this? I like, you know, it sounds almost too good to be true.
I agree.
What is it going to cost the farmers to get, to join this? I mean, I just, this sounds, I don't know. I trust that you haven't looked, that you've looked into, but it, it just almost sounds too good to be true. Like everybody saves, doesn't cost anybody anything, and my, my business antlers go way up and said, wait a minute.
I think that was your.
That was my initial reaction, that's why it took me a little.
It's been like a couple of years. I think that was, that was your first impression also.
You're right.
I trusted you were going to do your due diligence and, and check things out prior to bringing it, so.
It is, it's pharmacies and pharmaceutical companies, they, they, when you download your prescription card, you would get a logo of participating pharmacies. They want to drive you, who may be not filling your prescriptions, to filling prescriptions, make them affordable and, and drive more people in, into their stores.
Is the city's role in it really just to get the information out?
It's really more of a marketing link to get you, understand this benefit is available to you and here's how to get there.
So it's just a benefit available to the citizens of Paducah? Really, our role is just helping to get the information out? There's, I mean, they could do it without, anyway. They could go to that website without going through the city.
Right, without a link to our website.
Are you encouraged by the League of Kentucky Cities, were we not, to, to help?
Yes, the Kentucky League of Cities did, in, in a recent approach, walked me through the program and kind of showed me more of the benefits and more of the testimonials of our local participants. And, and that, that helped me kind of turn the corner there.
Do our local drugstores currently take the card? Because when I, when I was campaigning and there was a lady that I, told me that her hus, she and her husband had to drive to Louisville and it wasn't mentioned as a gold card because they could get his prescription through a gold card in Louisville, but they couldn't get it here.
Okay.
So do our current, our pharmacies now would take this?
Yes, they are already on the program. Every, when I, when I went to the website and searched, I need Lipitor, or I need, you know, all of those, those items that I searched, I could find those at no fewer than 10 pharmacies showed up with my milligrams of prescription that I put in and, and specific examples.
For the gold card, with this, with this card?
Or the Kentucky Prescription Card, yes.
Is that a different card from what you're talking about? I don't know. She mentioned it as a gold card, so I'm, it may be the same thing. You wrote down.
I'm just.
The RX Gold Card? I didn't, I don't know if you said that at the beginning or?
I am not familiar with a gold.
Okay. This may have been something else then that she was getting. Well, I mean, I think it's something that we need to do. It's a no-brainer, really.
Well, I think, when I first, when I first saw this, it was, I don't know, it's, it's been a while ago. And I came back and I, and I gave it to, I gave it to Cindy and just, you know, check this out to see if it's, if it's too good to be true or is there some merit to it? And she researched it. And for me, it's, it's an opportunity, yes. You look at it and you're like, okay, oh, first of all, is it going to cost the city anything to do it? No. Is this some kind of, some kind of scam thing, right? No, so that's why you, you check it out every which way you can. And at the end of the day, if it's, if it's legit, then this is something that we're making our citizenry aware of, that they can participate in. They don't have to. It's go to the website, get a card, you can participate if you want to. If you do, then there's significant savings on your, on your prescription. So I think it's a great opportunity for, for our folks.
I was just going to say, I, I remember when Commissioner Abraham brought that, it has been some time ago, and I know that Cindy's had it, and she looks at everything with a pretty skeptical eye. I mean, she, that's one of her best traits. So, that's exactly right. So I, I know that you've done your research and I feel pretty comfortable with that.
There are programs of this nature that do require enrollment fees and then there are, then there are complaints about companies like that. I've paid my enrollment fee and now I'm not seeing a member benefit. I saw, I, I saw information about enrollment fees and then selling my information truly to, to. Can I bring up the website on here? I'm going to give a shot and try to pull up the website.
Tammy got it.
Tammy just looked at it, she got it to pull up. And she has, what, a $200 savings on a prescription?
On one of my grandson's prescriptions. We pay almost 400 and it comes up at.
Now, I didn't get that result for every prescription I tried, but on average, I tested their, their touting of 30 to 75% and that's, that's the range I got as well. But I did get some that were well under 30.
Not to project out that we're wanting or attempting to individualize this. We're simply attempting to help our public understand this is out there, so I would encourage.
Give them the choice to.
Right.
I don't, I don't think we're supposed to be the good housekeeping seat of approval. I, I would feel very nervous about as a city recommending to the constituents, oh, this is okay. I mean, no offense Cindy, but I mean, I'm not sure that's our purpose here.
Like I said, to get.
You're not sure our purpose is to do what?
To give the good housekeeping seat of approval to the KentuckyRXCard.com folks. I just.
Well, I think if anyone's watching, the information is on the screen.
They make their own decision, they make their own decision.
Well, people can interpret what they want. Some folks will just see that as an opportunity, oh, I didn't know that. They can go on and look at the information for themselves and decide whether they want to participate or not.
Yeah.
If I want to save $200 on a prescription and I didn't know it and that's the information, like whoa, I might try that and see, see how that works.
And that's all we're doing tonight is just saying this is available, if you want to try it, you can. We're not doing a motion or anything, we're just, we're just giving out information to the public. Thank you Cindy.
Thanks Cindy.
My pleasure.
Okay, we'll go on to the City Manager's report.
I have a couple of things. One, I want to start with, Farmer's Market presentation was made last week. There was some, I think, wonderment or hope on the part of commission members that perhaps the proposal for a three-day week could be expanded upon. And the information that was at hand last week indicated that there might be some restriction to expand it on that in terms of making the use of vouchers for the nutrition program eligible. Essentially, we've had three different reference points on that, one being the regs and two others being two different people with the Nutrition Department that the mayor and I and Lisa have all spoke to. And what it comes down to now, and as we now understand it, that vouchers can be used irrespective of the number of vendors that are on site at a given time. The language has to do not with the number of vendors as much as it does some reference to the availability of a commodity. So clearly, if a commodity's not available, a voucher couldn't be used anyway. But if it's there, the voucher can be used. So with that in mind, if it's, the commissions wish, we will work to reestablish the six-day run, if you will, of Farmer's Markets such as what it was in years past. And with this understanding that the nutrition vouchers can be used at any time that the commodity is available. Another point that came up last week with respect to the submission of statements of grocery receipts, that it was going to be weekly. We've reviewed that and determined it does not need to be that frequently. So we'll talk more at the staff level about that, as to whether it would need to be monthly or seasonally. We're, monthly, we're talking about a few times a year, seasonally, only one. So if those changes are in accordance with the wishes of the commission, I will work with Lisa and staff to effect those changes.
On the previous, the previous schedule, it was a Thursday to six, are you going to try to do that or go back to the earlier than that?
I think that the, the, go back to the previous model so that we didn't have to.
Just be weekdays and then Saturday?
Redouble things any more than we had to, you know? And we have to move fairly soon on this because we have follow-up information now to send out, if we, if we go back to six days a week, to those who have already applied. So we would need to move pretty quick here to, to get this new information out.
Is the requirement, is the insurance has to be? Rex Smith has asked for this. And he's the owner of the property, right?
I, I can't, I cannot, I, I can only draw back on what I heard last week. I don't have firsthand knowledge of that because I did not set the program up or, or handle things at that level of detail. So whatever was represented last week on that, I believe continues to be the case on insurance.
Because the state just talks about it would be, it's nice to have, you're encouraged, but the state doesn't say it's required.
Yeah, I mean, it's just very much a city issue in terms of what level of coverage we want, should there be something that we could potentially be pulled into?
We've not had before, correct?
Cindy, have we had insurance requirement in the past?
It's hard to answer those, she isn't here tonight, but.
I think Cindy can probably come up with that one.
We have insurance requirements from everything from.
Did they have it last year though? I mean, in the past, has the Farmer's Market?
Farmer's Market.
I believe it was in there for last year.
I, I understood Lisa to say that the owner of the property.
That is correct, and that Lisa's been in.
I was under the impression that, that the Amish weren't going to participate this year because of the insurance program requirement and last year they were there and been there for several years. I mean, it would sound to me like this may be a new change, a toughening of the rules.
It, it is a, it does appear to be a stricter enforcement.
Well, if the state's not requiring it, only suggesting it.
But neither is the state exempt, giving us immunity from liability. So, I mean, it really comes down to whether we think it's something we need and in the advice of our risk manager, she believes that it is. Is that correct?
Yes, that is my recommendation.
Other than the Amish, well, and we don't know this because Lisa's not here, I wonder how many people it's affecting their participation?
Let me check into that. I mean, if I see something that's a problem with that, I'll let you all know.
It just seems to me like we're trying to build this program and the more complicated we make it, the more rules and regulations, even though we may feel great about that as a city, but if it, if it makes the system, or makes the Farmer's Market more difficult to grow it, then are we, what are we accomplishing? We can say, oh, we've, we're safe for now because we've restricted, I mean.
There's just a lot of, like some of those questions that we've had, we can't answer because she's not here tonight to answer those for us, so.
Well, I think that insurance question is, I mean, I'm, I'm not taking issue with what you're saying there, but that is a broader issue for the city in terms of its liability exposure. I think we have a department director that's doing their job in, in trying to limit that with some guidance from the Risk Management Department. We're not jumping out of the box here in, with where this program is concerned. There may be some impact there that's unfortunate based on how it's being received or able to be handled by somebody. But I think the issue is really the same there as what it is with most of the liability coverage considerations that the city has for any of our vendors or people doing business in association with the city or under permit by the city. It's all pretty much the same issue.
But we were comfortable for several years without the insurance. I'm just.
I'm just saying, Alan, we can't answer the question, the specific question about the owner of the property because he's not here to answer that nor the person that's talked to him.
But, but Alan, in all fairness, keep in mind that the way it was done previously, it wasn't necessarily the city doing it. So it's prob, and, and there was a rider added to that policy to protect everyone participating. It was done a little, it was structured differently.
PRA has been doing it.
For the last few years and, like last year, and that's what she's saying, but when I, I shook my head, yes, it wasn't required previously, it, it was done differently. There's a 501(c)(3) doing it, they bought the insurance, covered everyone, so it wasn't a city issue, it was different rules. So that's probably where some of the confusion's coming from the farmers, where they didn't have to get it in years past, that's probably the red flag.
Because PRA is a city department now, so we have to handle it differently.
Correct.
It was this PRA, it was a city department, wasn't it, city department last summer?
Yes, and it was required last summer, right?
I got the impression it was not. The insurance on it.
But I think what she's saying is that it's being a little more strictly enforced.
Ah.
If, if that's what I heard correctly.
Big difference.
I have another item as well. It's actually a pretty big item. It has to do with the Riverfront Development. We have had some new information developed, and I say developed because this is information that is a result of a, of a lot of staff effort to produce information, to be in a position to visit with you more. This is not an action item tonight by any respects, but it does affect a sequence of actions or decisions that would be before you and that's why it's important that we talk to you tonight. So I'm going to actually use the podium, if you don't mind, in a rare instance of doing that, to make a PowerPoint presentation in conjunction with Rick. Information in this PowerPoint presentation, as I said, has been developed in, in terms of the process that Rick and his staff has been involved with in bidding two components of the Riverfront Development Project. And some of the refinement of the figures and the formatting of this program was done by John Perkins and staff, pretty much dedicated their whole afternoon today to do that. And I mention these things because it exemplifies the ability and willingness of the staff of the city to, in fact, conduct what you might call just-in-time management in a sense because that's the world that we, we often work in. And I think the city is fortunate to have people that have the capability and the willingness to function under those conditions. So I'm going to go to the podium if you don't.
Sure.
What you have to do is hit the arrow key.
The arrow key, okay. That tells you how good I am with this. That tells you how good I am with this stuff. Which arrow key? I see, no, that one?
Yeah, that one.
Okay.
Do you have some handouts for us too?
Yeah, can I go over it on screen? And then I'm, I'm gonna give you a handout. As you all know, we are on the cusp of considering the award of, of two contracts for the riverfront development phase one project, two of what would be three major construction projects. As the commission knows, we recently took bids for the boat launch part of the project. And even though Rick and his staff have done their due diligence and have a recommendation for the award of that bid, we didn't feel that it made sense, nor would you find it particularly acceptable to proceed with the request to let that contract until you knew more about the second construction project, the, what we call the breakwater project. It's called the bump out. It's called the mass fill. It's all the same thing, which is a second project here that was following closely on the hills of the, of the, the boat launch project. So they have sort of come together and they are at a concurrent point right now. And we thought that in order to give you the best view of those two and how they come together, we should also give you the total view of the project to include the third component of the project, which will be the, the pier and the marina building and that, and those things pulled together. So in order to do that, we're going to take a look at all three of those and, and track back a little bit in the sequencing. We couldn't help but put that photo in there from the ground breaking last fall. So since it's so colorful and some of us still are pulling sand out of our ears. Okay, the boat launch is the first one we want to talk about. It's the construction of a boat ramp and facilities include six lane boat ramp, parking lot, access road, courtesy dock, and launch activities. Again, bids were taken on that in the last few weeks, have been reviewed, and Public Works is in a position to make a recommendation to let a contract if and when you're ready to do so. Okay, we want to take a look at the financial side of that project. What are the sources of funding for that? One is a gold grant that G stands for governor. I'm not sure what the other letters in the acronym are, but it's a state grant received back in 2007 for 150,000. A second component of the funding for that project is the city's investment fund. Now, these are funds spent to date on that project, 141,075 dollars. Now, as you see, those funds were spent between the years fiscal year 2007 and 2010. Significance of that is twofold. Number one, the city has invested its own resources in this project. Number two, it has done so as far back as 2007. We are invested in this project. That suggests to me, I wasn't here at the time, but that makes a strong, strong suggestion to me that there was some anticipation at that time that city investment in this project would be necessary. Okay, another source of funding for the boat launch project is the city's MAP fund. We propose to allocate, reallocate $200,000 of our MAP money, which is our street reconstruction money from this current budget year, the investment fund for the reconstruction of Burnett Street, which is a component of the boat launch. It makes perfect sense to me. It's a good fit, a very creative and resourceful way of finding the resources necessary to build this project or that component of it. The next funding component of this, and I have it in bold because this has not yet been approved by you, you would have to essentially be agreeable to this in order for this project to be let. And that would be the appropriation in the investment fund next year of the amount of 196,545 dollars. The largest component of the funding for the boat launch component of the riverfront project is the F H W A grant, which is in the amount of 2,254,100 dollars. That is the money that Rick often says turns into a pumpkin if it is not spent by late fall of next year. So you see a total of resources, part of which is proposed in the form of the 196,545 from investment funds for next fiscal year of 2,941,720 dollars. Now, the uses of that fund, we're just categorizing it two ways. Basically, prior expenditures or expenditures to date and that which remains to be spent. To date, on this part of the project, the city has spent of its own money, beginning way back in 2007, 297,250 dollars. The balance, most of which is under bid now and ready to be put into contract form. In other words, it is identified, it is finite. It's 2,588,466 dollars, bringing the total proposed project spending to 2,941,720 dollars. So folks, that is the boat launch component of it. And that is what we're looking at as the means to complete it. The second construction component of the project, this is kind of my term, breakwater. I kind of like it better than mass fill or some others that I've heard. I guess that's an individual choice. But descriptively, it's the gangway piles in the mass fill construction. Some call it the bump out. So let's take a look at that one in the same manner as we did the boat launch. What are the sources of funding? Well, the general fund as far back as 2008 had spent 439,840 dollars. Now, this is the part of the project that has the large design fees. This is part of a project against which most of the muscles, legal expense, mitigation expense, relocation expense, and all of that has been expensed. So we see the investment fund has also made an investment to date in this project of 526,680 dollars, dating as far back as the year 2008. Also in 2011, a portion of a bond sale was appropriated or transferred into the project fund in the amount of 311,480 dollars. In 2012, last year, we closed out some small project funds that were laying around and put the proceeds into this as well, totaling 86,100 dollars. I'm gonna drop two down, pass the bold, down to the HUD grant. This is the, the federal earmark HUD grant that has been allocated for this project, 2,970,000 dollars. The total sources of 5,755,515 dollars would be the build out for this project based on the information that was, came about yesterday as a result of the rejection of the bids on this project and the selection of three bidders for competitive negotiations that produced a revised projected, well, it's more than projected bid cost for the city of 4.49 million, 600 dollars, which is what you see under mass fill construction. So that is a, a, potentially a contracted figure. That is the amount that we would contract with, one of the contractors with, to do the construction. So that amount plus the 1,264,915 that's previously been spent on this component of the project adds up to 5,755,515 dollars. Now, let's back up to the sources. You see two in italics, or excuse me, in bold print. And the reason they're in bold print is because they have not been either proposed to you or agreed to you. However, the combined amount of money, about 1.42 million, represents today the shortfall in funding in order to make this part of the project happen. Thought a lot about this and decided in consultation with Rick and John and others that the timing was such that we needed to bring this forward and we needed to bring it forward now, now that we've got real figures to work with. And you've heard Rick say multiple times, until we got bids, we won't have real figures to work with. So we have real figures to work with. And now we can take a look at the revenue side and contemplate what it is that we might be able to do to make this happen. Our recommendation for how that amount of money is produced would be, number one, the proceeds of the upcoming Sheehan Bridge Road land sale be allocated for this project. That sale has not happened yet. It'll happen in May or perhaps June. At this point in time, if I put a figure in there higher than what we bought it for, that would sound a little bit over zealous. If I put something lower, it could have the opposite effect. I thought that perhaps the best figure to put in there was our acquisition price because it probably represents the middle of the road. I have a little bit of information that I have accumulated based on review of proposals that I have from auctioneering firms and what ag land is selling for. And I feel pretty comfortable based on that, that that's, that's a reasonably accurate figure to use. The other piece of that, right about a half a million dollars, represents what we would call the delta, if you will, or a amount of money that we don't have an easy way to identify. Let me mention one more thing about the Sheehan Bridge Road sale proceeds. That is a one-time chunk of change coming back into the city budget. That makes perfect sense to go out for a one-time purpose. It's also money that was, or an asset that was created for capital purposes that would be reused for another capital purpose. If we want to add a third piece of rationale to that, that is an asset that was created for a leisure service slash recreational project that would be reallocated to a different project of a similar nature. So we think thematically that makes a certain amount of sense as well. So the half a million dollars that remains is decision point. We have a couple of options for that. We are expecting that our general fund reserve at year's end will exceed the requirement as per city policy by some measure. And we would have the means there, we believe, to allocate all or most of that from that source. There also would exist the option for the commission to add that amount to an upcoming bond sale to produce the revenue that way. Let me go to the third part of this so that you see the, the complete picture. And then I'm gonna ask Rick to kind of step through some logistical steps and then we'll get around to the questions. Okay, the third part of this is the marina service dock building, transient dock service building, which is the gangway marina service building, dockage, anchorage, fuel system, power pedestals, sanitary sewer landscaping, which means the capping off of the breakwater structure and landscaping thereof. Okay, this one is a little bit more condensed because we are not in the detailed specking stage just yet in the sense of having finalized a, a spec for bid. So we're really approaching this more from the sources standpoint. We have invested in this part of the project to date through the city's general fund, 320,000. We have a federal grant pending of 3,881,000. We also have a boating infrastructure grant of 910,000 for a total resource of 5,111,000. So we are showing that in terms of use as the budgeted construction cost or what would represent our project budget to date. So that's a little simplified compared to the other two, but I think you understand why it is because we don't have better figures to work with. I would suggest that every effort would be made to deliver a project within that budgeted amount. Obviously, there would be some opportunity, if the commission wished to, to add certain things if you wanted. There's always opportunity to add things based on your belief of, on the functionality part of that. So I think that's the last side. Maybe we should stop just on the financial part and see if there are any questions briefly before we go on to Rick. Shall we just move on and let Rick speak? Okay.
Any questions? Sure. Come on, Rick.
Mayor, commission, the, I guess, the things that the city manager has discussed with you, the bump out, this first project was somewhat of a surprise as far as the actual bid, bids that we received for that. The one thing that I'd like to remind the public and, and this body as well, is that initially that fill that goes out there and those piles that go, go out there will not be attractive. And it'll be that way for nine to 12 months as natural settlement occurs. So that the project where the city manager spoke of, the 5.1 million, the project to come, that's the project that finalizes, I guess, the landscaper caps it out and covers up the stone that has to settle in the riverbed. So that, that would be, that would be something that I'm sure the public could be somewhat confused on because there'd be, I guess, that part was that, well, we thought it was going to be finished, well, for nine to 12 months. It, it's not going to be attractive for that. And then that would come later on in 14 and 15.
You're ready, you could be ready to go for the boat launch and the bump out.
Correct. What we would like, what we would like to do is, is, we're, we're at a crossroads here because we have some financial challenges that are shown with the projects. The city manager, myself and John Perkins and the finance staff, we've been looking for ways to bring solutions to these projects, to move them forward. Right now, we have agenda action items that we would like to bring to you all, to this body next Tuesday for introduction and also the following Tuesday for an adoption so that we can actually award the contracts to these bidders. That Smith Construction actually has, is awaiting an award on the boat launch project. But as we received the bids on the bump out project, that created a somewhat of a hiccup, and I'm, I'm using that term lightly there, for how we move forward. The reason for that is you essentially have about 10 million dollars worth of grants that are on the line if we choose not to move forward. Those monies will be forever lost.
Okay, back to the, if we approve them, if you bring them forward, the boat launch, you could start on right away?
Immediately. We'd like to start in May on both of them.
Okay, and when would that be completed? What would be the completion date of that?
I would like, we've got 120 days from the time of notice to proceed on the boat launch project. We have 180 days on, from the time of notice of proceed on the bump out project. And on September 30th, our HUD money is absolutely gone. If we cannot send them where we have spent that 2,970,000, we have to show canceled checks for that amount of money. And we've already called Washington DC. I've appealed to everybody.
I know.
That I can to extend that, and we will not be able to extend that.
But if we approve it within the next two weeks and you could get started, then you could spend it and both of them could be completed this year.
That is our anticipation, exactly. Now, some, somebody might be doing the math, okay? If you were to do the math on 180 days beyond May, that would take you beyond September the 30th. There's a lot of work beyond the 2.97 million that's still on the project. This is, this is us, I guess, from my position to you and the city is pushing the envelope on that.
You can spend their money first?
We can spend their money first.
And you'll have time to spend it.
We will, fortunately, I have talked to the bidders about the river project, the infill project. It's not like rain days hurt you because you're floating, you're in a cab. If it's not pouring down rain and if it's just drizzling, rain days don't necessarily hurt you like a construction project where you're having to deal with wet soils, muddy conditions. You're floating, it doesn't slow you down too much. River conditions could affect you. And none of us have a crystal ball of what may or may not happen with the river. We've seen it some, seen it do some strange things. We've seen it some, seen it do some strange things, but typically during the summer months between May and November, it's, it's at a river pool of 16 feet, so, and most all of these contractors know that. Well, they're very aware of it.
Okay.
Any questions for Rick?
No, I, I think I'm pretty clear, because the boat launch, everything's covered. There's no shortfall there. We're, we're ready to go. That's what I'm understanding.
Actually, yes, we're covered.
I thought there was 197,000.
We're, we're covered, but, yeah, we're covered, but.
But we have it out of the investment fund for next year.
Correct.
We know, I mean, it's budgeted. It will be budgeted.
Uh, as of our, uh, current status of the development of the investment fund budget for next year, it's in there.
We just have to approve it.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
In the, in the Marina Service Building, transient dock, so I don't see, are there slips in there or?
No, there will not be any slips initially during, uh, for these first two. Now, as the city manager, as the city manager, uh, pointed out, on the 5.1 million dollars, you don't have bids yet. Based on the bids, we will have slips proposed as alternates in the bids, and if we can afford them initially, we will include them. However, as the city manager also demonstrated, we had this part, uh, a term I used kind of tricked out a little bit. It's, it's, we had it, you know, like art amenities, uh, you know, art allowances of 250,000 dollars. Well, some of those things you'll have to look at and make prioritization decisions if you have to make financial adjustments to bring things within bids or within, uh, I guess, budgets. Uh, the slips, Commissioner Rhodes, would be one of those things because initially, initially, it will be a functioning facility on the river. Will it be a totally functional marina at the time, uh, that? We can't, we can't give that, uh, answer today because we don't have, uh, the bids in. However, will we be able to sell fuel? Will, will we be able to interact with the transient voters? Absolutely.
So this would go up for bid, uh, in 2014, project?
I would, I would anticipate that, yes, we would be bidding that, uh, in the spring of 2014.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd just, uh, like to repeat what Rick said. I, uh, this is information tonight. It takes the information base well forward from where it existed prior, uh, with respect to what we had to communicate with you. In order to, um, stay on, in a timeline that's workable, both with respect to the construction and, and the timing of the bid letting vis a vis how good bids are, as well as the, um, federal funding turning into a pumpkin, it would be our intention to bring both of these forward next Tuesday night for introduction. Um, I don't anticipate anything's going to change here on any of these. Uh, however, if it did, we would certainly, um, point that out to you. And in the meantime, feel free, if you have any questions of Rick or John or I, uh, about any aspect of this, I think you know where our individual focuses might be on, on this. Feel free to, um, contact any of us.
One thing I'd like to add to this, I guess, uh, discussion, when we opened the bids the other day, uh, for the bump out project, the high bid was 8.2, the low bid was 6.6, the engineer's estimate was 3.9. So you can imagine our, I guess, concern. We immediately rejected those bids. The city manager immediately rejected those bids. We entered into competitive negotiations, and through those competitive negotiations, we're down to 4.49, which is a substantial, uh, less, lesser amount than your low bid coming out of the gate. And that's through making some adjustments with some fillstone and then also some re-engineering of a portion of those structures that was allowable, uh, to do so. So just through those negotiations, we saved, uh, 1,006 to 2, 1.2, 2.1 million dollars. So the big jump, uh, through those negotiations.
And Rick, I just wanted to congratulate you and, uh, the whole city staff that worked on this, and, um, I mean, it just shows the professionalism, um, that you all exhibit through all this, because it, it really was, I was sitting here that day when the bids were opened, and it makes you take a big gulp. Um, even the, I don't know who the two guys behind me were, but they were going, oh, my. Um, so, you know, we have to be resourceful.
Yeah.
And you all have shown that, and we have to be smart about how we spend the money, and you all have done that. Appreciate the work you've done, Jeff. And we need to make it happen.
I think it's to that point. Are we serious about developing our riverfront? If we are, it's laid out in front of us.
Right, and it makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, last thing I have, we have, uh, executive session on two, uh, issues tonight.
Are you, are you ready? You want me to read it? Okay. I have a pen. I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Future sale or acquisition of specific parcels of real estate is permitted by KRS 61.8101B. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity is permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Thank you. We will not be making any decisions, and we are adjourned.